City of Pleasantville, city house support meeting. May is made a second twenty 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 time is six thirty four P M. Sunshine State is this meeting has been newly advertised as season's been over. Over come in the other way from the sunshine wall. Go go.
Danny and Alara. Thomas. Colonna. Korea. Sisra. Pablo.
Okay, I'll take a motion to uh finish a motion to uh who of the previous minutes.
That's all right.
On say that. That's it. Now we have the fire departments, the ceremony and accommodations. Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Council Mayor, thank you, especially for coming down here as you can see there's a lot of people. Uh ladies and gentlemen, uh thank you for coming out. Uh today is a little special, it's a little unique uh due to covid. The normal swearing in is done in front of council, in council chambers with friends, family. Uh you know, to enjoy the best of these covid hit and it didn't happen. Uh you know, one of my battalion chiefs, he has sworn in the conference room. You could probably be home tomorrow. So one of the things that we're going to do today is um they're going, we're going to give them the opportunity to in front of council, in front of the mayor, and in front of friends and family to actually get their ceremony. So real quick before I start, um. Just want to do a little brief action. Um we had two mid-termings today. You know, the mayor's presentation on that. So um during April twenty twenty, uh during the pandemic, Captain Peter Elias, firefighters Richie and Kevin Benegas were promoted. Um they were in a closed session in the uh engine room of the firehouse and like I said, in the conference room. Then we hired six additional people, firefighters as well, that uh then when they have sworn in, it was sworn in requirement, very little family, no friends, and basically no family. Um so that'll be Ryan Dixon, Martin Nini, Felix Gorges, Donald Lavi, Marcos Perez, and Kyle Duffy. Uh we have additional partner who came in here today, so the family down in Georgia, that's Norm Dennis the third. Uh Ben Weiss familiar, that's the son of patrolman uh Norm Dennis as well. And then we hired two additional about two months ago, three months ago, Peter Librini and Kristen Cortez. So just want to give you a little uh little tidbit. Uh Captain Benegas is the first suspended firefighter to be promoted to captain in the city of Pleasantville and the Pleasantville Fire Department. Um Kristen Cortez is the second female that we hired, but she's the first minority female in the history of our department. So it's pretty special. So everybody in here, that's a good one. Uh everybody in here, how they were sworn in. So I'm just going to read it for everyone in line, the uh the names and the titles. So in the Oval Office, State of New Jersey, County Atlantic, I safely do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of New Jersey, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and the governments established in the United States and in this state under the authority of the people, and that I will faithfully and partially and justly perform all the duties of the office of battalion chief captain and firefighter for the city of Pleasantville according to the best of my ability, so help me God. So that's the Oval Office that everyone was as they came. So um I'm going to do this uh in the midst week. Battalion Chief Elias. So Battalion Chief Elias, um he is a twenty-four-year veteran of the Pleasantville Fire Department. And Theresa is going to give him, normally they'd be in dress uniform, but since uh you know, we didn't have the normal ceremony, this is the next best thing that we can do. In addition to that, I also have a uh certificate from Dennis Levinson, the county chairman. Uh you know, proudly silence, you know, battalion chief, Chief Elias, and his new ranking recognition uh for the lives of our residents and safe communities. So keep going. Don't say it.
Snackle.
Okay, battalion chief Elias. Next I have Captain Richard and Captain Benegas. She's coming. Excellent. These are the guys that were out in the engine room. I have both the models and these guys. So uh Captain Richard, Captain Benegas, go ahead and uh and have a uh confirmation from the county for you as well.
Uh it's my wife, Melissa.
Melissa Ritchie.
Who are you?
Spencer.
Spencer. As you can see, the um service is very family oriented. Um you know, we spend twenty-four hours living together for each other at the fire station, so. Excellent, guys. So I mean firefighters Dixon, Ryan Dixon, Martin Gennini, Felix Gorges, Donald Lavi, Marcos Perez, and Kyle Duffy. Okay. So these were the guys that were hired and worked and uh like I said, you know, it's kind of a private kind of thing where they needed to enjoy this as with their family. So go ahead and bring uh your family up to start.
Chief Gordon.
There's my mom. Excellent, congratulations, guys. And the last two firefighters that were in one's uh mayor words were living upstairs in the council. Uh you know, that's that's big extended acting. Uh that's the firefighters, Librini, Peter Librini, and firefighter Kristen Cortez.
Uh my wife.
Excellent. Okay, guys, go ahead and go. Congratulations. So as you can see, it's an awesome experience, uh you know, promoted and supported in front of everybody, friends and family. Um I have two more things, but I'm going to defer to the mayor of the county because that's also the two charities also have the uh the county as well.
Happy Christopher Dancy. And finally, congratulations.
Danielle. Come on, honey.
Turn around and face the camera.
Okay, yeah, uh a combination of the men in Pleasantville and it reads as follows. Whereas Christopher Dancy enjoyed the city of Pleasantville in April of nineteen ninety-seven as a fire recruit and then upon switching up, is classed as firefighter in the local service department and city until his retirement after twenty-five years of service. Whereas Christopher has participated in and successfully completed educational courses and training throughout the years that assisted in the work is knowledge and skill within the department. Christopher Dancy also faithfully participated in and supported our local school district choir for interprogrammes, Reed Cross America, and Community Control by the Fire Department. Firefighter Dancy lived in my inspector for several years and met the Pleasantville firefighter, I A F F local two-six sixteen, as president. Now therefore I, to be in board mayor of the city of Pleasantville, Germany, on behalf of the city council, this administration, the citizens of Pleasantville, and fire department do commend Christopher Dancy for twenty-five years of service to the city of Pleasantville and do pray for a healthy and rewarding retirement. And with this wearout, I have set my hand in the Pleasantville city of Pleasantville to be a fix for the second day of May and year from the word two thousand twenty-two, Judy Namborin. Congratulations.
Good afternoon, Mayor. On behalf of local two-six, one-six, rather present this to my brother right here. Christopher Dancy, on behalf of the Pleasantville local two-six, one-six.
Amen.
For twenty-five years of dedicated service to the Pleasantville Fire Department and the city of Pleasantville, twenty twenty-two.
Counselor like the.
Preston.
Preston. Counselor like the.
Would I? Sure. Off the cuff, twenty-five years. Um. The first thing I'm going to do is I'm going to look at guys. And I'm going to say it's been an absolute pleasure to serve with you guys side by side through the ups and the downs. No greater department exists, Pleasantville Fire Department, hurrah. Why are we not called mutual equals? Because we put the fire out in red. That's what we do. We don't sit around, play games, we come with the fire out. Parties know nothing. Love you guys to death. Last thing, working in the city of Pleasantville, that's where I was born and raised. Um it has been nothing more than a humbling experience to be put on a platform, given the opportunity to help others at a different level. There's no greater, there's no greater achievement, there's no greater feeling. And I'm, I'm just called by that. Um it's twenty-five years, time does fly, it goes by fast, it doesn't wait for anyone. But uh it's been a wonderful experience giving back to our great city, our residents, and it's something I'll never forget, I'll always cherish. Um I have to thank council for the job that you do to provide us the resources that we need to make this happen as well as our residents. So I'm going to say thank you, so does everybody here.
We also have a combination from uh. Okay, I'm not going to read it, I'm just going to read that's joint legislative combination from Assembly, excuse me, from Senator Defense in Halesina and uh Senator Don Guardia. And it's uh Assemblyman Claire Smith. Okay, congratulations to them all. And you too, if you have a big part of the community. Okay, would Firefighter Chief Wellington please?
Uh Chief Wellington, he was at for a very short time. I remember he was sworn in a month ago, but he's been missing out on the regulations. This is a combination of the local mayor and the city of Pleasantville. Where Eugene Wellington joined the city of Pleasantville Fire Department in April of nineteen ninety-seven as a fire recruit. His commitment, skills, skill development, and evident leadership, potential for, potentially forward of him to the opportunity of self-promotion throughout his tenure. And fire department, he was promoted to firefighter, training firefighter, captain of the team, and deputy fire chief. Eugene served his final promotions in March and January of twenty twenty-five, where he served until his retirement at twenty-five years. Where Eugene participated and successfully completed a MyRap certification courses that assisted in improving his skills within his leadership to continue the decades of partnership with the local school district to provide information on fire prevention and ensure the safety of our local community. Chief Wellington exhibited great dedication and determination as an employee and department head. Now therefore I, to be in board mayor of Pleasantville, Germany, on behalf of the city council, this administration, the citizens of Pleasantville, and the fire department do commend Eugene Wellington for twenty-five years of service to the city of Pleasantville and do pray for a healthy and rewarding retirement. And with this wearout, I have set my hand in the Pleasantville city of Pleasantville to fix this second day of May and the year from the word two thousand twenty-two, Judy Namborin.
And again, we have some combination from State of New Jersey, joint legislative combination by Senator Defense in Halesina and Senator Don Guardia and Assemblyman Claire Smith. Congratulations. And one more and the others is from Emily Zett and it's Levinson.
I'd like to acknowledge Commissioner Miss Patrick, Senator Man Guardia, and Senator Halesina. Welcome, thank you.
Okay, I'm just going to, well, I'll be going to say a few words first, uh then congratulations. Thank you for all that you've done and I will be in three years retirement. God bless you and safe and healthy.
Have your honey do this ready?
Good evening, everyone. When inspecting, they really have to speak. Again, sum up over twenty-five years of dedication in this city. I'll just say, I moved up here, I've longed for time before I got hired in the fire department. I will say this, I've had the blood, I won't say hate, that was part of it, through the whole bit. I wear it with the best fire department in this county, not this state. These guys over here, some of the best guys I've ever met, win their lives along and enjoying making the best of everything that we have. And guys, these last twenty-five and ten years have been great work of you. All of you helped make me who I am today, one way or another, and I appreciate you. Counselor, Miss Pink, Mayor Ward, I take great pleasure in the faith that you gave me, not just as a chief, but with everything else you went on within the department the last few years. The brand is reparking back on what it is. And I can't thank you for all the support that God got everybody sitting over here behind you. I do appreciate it. Scott, I wish you the best of luck. Keep doing your work, don't back down. Chris, I know you're back there somewhere. And you said it twenty-five years ago. Hey, uh we were walking in this place together, we're walking out this place together. And it's been a great ride. Remember told, Monday, our first day of the shift, twenty-five years, we go by quick. The two of us out there walking each other, look, yeah, it's not going to be a walk quick. And look at it all, it passed you. My voice to everybody is just enjoy life and make the best of it, thank you.
Congratulations to everyone this evening. I know you've all been here for some time now. Um I just want to say welcome to the team and um stay safe and God bless you and keep up the great work. Oh once again, I want to thank also um New Jersey State Representative Don Guardia, Senator Halesina, and County Fitzpatrick for coming here this evening to celebrate this joyous moment with our fire department. Thanks again.
Happy retirement, happy new hire. Um Mr. Dancy, Chris, you've always been a gentleman. You've been absolutely the most outstanding person I can think of. And the city of Pleasantville is going to be just that much sadder that you're not around because you're such a great person. Happy to retire.
Hello, everyone. I want to say congratulations to the guys, firefighters that were promoted, promoted as captains. Also the new firefighters, Malcolm Boyd. I know you guys got a good job, and that's the beaters. And also I want to say congratulations to my retirees. Um have a blessed retirement, stay safe, and enjoy your retirement. Thank you and invite them to a blessed retirement.
I want to congratulate all the newly hired, new it, the retirees, really, to tell the truth. Um we, this is a proud moment for Irish City. Christopher Luke said it any better, no greater fire department than the one in the city of Pleasantville. And I thank you all for that.
Good evening, everyone. Uh on behalf of the city administration, I am the business administrator for the city of Pleasantville. And I just want to take this opportunity to say that you guys are true to one another. Uh I don't know how many emails, how many phone calls I got, now having a ceremony here today to make sure that you guys have proper space and your. and your family and friends and loved ones can come out and be here and take part in this ceremony. So they really go forward for that because of the pandemic, and again, we wasn't able to have it. But I'm glad to see that you're able to celebrate one another tonight. Chris, I don't know where you are, but I almost didn't recognize you. This is who I'm retiring it does for you. Good luck, and to all of you, have a great night as you celebrate one another. Congratulations to Chief Wellington. I'm not sure where he is right now. But you worked hard in this short period of time, Chief. And I think that everything that you have done, I know that we appreciate. And I hope that your department has appreciated what you have done in this fine period as well. So congratulations to everyone, and have a great day.
I'd like to welcome Karen Miss Mattcher, Fire Commissioner, being here. Senator Palestine, Assemblyman Guardian, and Assemblyman Smith. Thank you for coming. Don't make the US visit, you've gone many times. And everyone coming out tonight. And congratulations to all of our firefighters, the new hires, the retirees. God bless you.
Hello. For the officers, Peter, Joseph, and Kevin, congratulations on your promotions. The class of twenty twenty two, the class of twenty twenty one, and the class of twenty twenty two. Twenty twenty, twenty twenty two. Congratulations to you all. And to retirees, I'm going to say more about Chief Wellington and Christopher Dan. Congratulations, congratulations on your retirement. I enjoy, this is what we all work for. And you get your chance to do it. You did a great job, a youngest job here in this area. Congratulations to the Fire Department. Thank you for thinking about putting something like this on so we can just stand still and get ready, write it in flowers along with our two retirees. Godspeed, Godspeed, brothers. Take care. So those that aren't going to stay for the rest of this business, you're free to leave. As a matter of fact, we're going to take about five minutes off to the commission of course. Second, on my favor. Next is agenda item number three.
Next person with agenda is ordinance number five, second reading. Public hearing will be held. Supporting solo energy in the city.
Can you talk into the microphone so we can hear your face?
Ordinance number six, second reading. Public hearing will be held for a record session. Authorizing various improvements, repairs, and/or replacement of sewer lines in the city appropriate for some of four hundred dollars. Therefore, authorizing issuance of general obligation bonds to a bond to some patronage notes and the aggregate principal of up to four million dollars, making certain terminations and covenants and authorizing certain related actions in connection with the board. Please note, public, if needed, agenda is available here at the table.
Any questions?
I have a question. Okay, because it's a reading, so I saw that the people of the can speak on that reading.
So when it fits the item on the table, common agenda items, this is questions to the council. That is ordinance number eight. This is the physical budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank. Second reading.
Any questions?
Resolution eighty seven, claiming May the fifth, twenty twenty two as national fair trade.
Questions?
Resolution eighty eight, awarding contract to improvements to Tunis, Harrison, Prospect Avenue to Lexa Concrete Incorporated and the amount of six hundred fifty-three thousand, four hundred seventy-six thousand, zero six.
Questions?
Resolution eighty seven, authorizing a signing of this police certificate to set top federal construction.
Questions?
Resolution ninety, authorizing, sorry, adopting certain mine or updating and review of various sections of the personnel policies and procedures.
Questions?
Resolution ninety one, authorizing the issuance of sale of up to one hundred fifty thousand, four hundred seventy-five dollars, a special emergency note to the city, making certain covenants to maintain the extension of the interest or in said notes from federal income taxation and authorizing such for other actions and making such terminations as may be necessary or appropriate to effectuate the issuance and sell of the notes.
Questions? Explanation, Ms. Page.
Can you talk into the microphone so we can hear your face? Well, I'm not telling you to shut up, I'm telling you to speak up. Thank you, sir.
We talked about resolution ninety one. That is five years ago, the revaluation of the town. Three hundred seventy-four thousand dollars. They are in the awful five years. This is the balance that's left on it. Next year, it'll be down to seventy-five thousand, and two years.
Anyone?
Thank you.
Next is with people in the bill list.
The bill is, we took these papers to go over the page between this committee and this committee. Two of them, one at the bottom, payroll for April twenty-second. And then, the number across the corner, plus half for most vehicles, retirees, and their active employees. If you go to page, we'll look next, we'll look to be approved in this committee. You go to page one, which is three forty-eight LLC. This is money paid out of neighborhood improvement grant, which is doing the year or at the bus station. We go to top of page two, money kind of treasure. This is the fuel that we have shared everywhere in the county. There were numbers that have been increased from last month to about twelve thousand, to fourteen thousand. As you've all seen, the price of gas has been decreasing. The gas price, which can charge now up to ten cents a gallon, is still about a dollar left in there for regular people working for regular stewardship. And due to a maintenance, which is about a dollar twenty, less than by November. Halfway down, later, technology. This is for district department followers who are recreating any kind of accident. We're looking down, two more, two are at the plus from about twelve thousand, and then also again, employees, retired, and current employees. If we go to page twenty. Many ways, it's still in Florida, what's in that means to you? It's one, it's to north of Maine. We've been going to rural, it's kind of a little bit, about two thousand dollars. On page four, which is calling Larry Arora. There is for fifteen thousand dollars for replacing flooring in the city hall or opening areas of the floor, to secure your background while you're on a trip home. And they're also doing something with the platform that's a basic role. This is money coming out of, uh, granted, a couple of, uh, definitely. Page five, different damage to the antenna. This is a bio, biological figure of change in the district department. The one we have right now has been inspired from the year, particularly for that number of years. And it's there to retire for, again, there's some money coming out on our fourth district department from probably two thousand nineteen. All the other bills are normal operating bills to take care of, on the top of page two, there's a duty to a piece of pieces for our, for our pool which we have to do that for, help run things. Any questions?
Yes. On the first page, it says a land payment. This is COVID testing crossbars, eight hundred and six dollars. On the first page for land care, COVID testing crossbars, eight hundred and six dollars.
There, there's this comments for, I think, uh, test that we have for COVID. This would be a toward higher.
So this is just COVID testing.
Just COVID testing.
And how many crossbars?
Probably, I think, like a hundred dollars up. Hundred fifty, one twenty-five, one twenty-seven, so it's about six.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Tom, you're going to see this frequently on our bill list because whatever it is, it's challenged to maintain crossbars. So each time that we open crossbars and they become eligible for hiring, they will be tested. So these are not the existing crossbars. These are new crossbars which time you're seeing the bill list. Some of them, you know, they don't stay too long and you don't have to go through this process. That's a one going process. And you'll see this when the bill list is off as we have to hire to be sure that we have sufficient safety at the borders for our students.
That's his public portion of agenda items. How may we please come forward to Mr. Larry here as about the home, as presented to the president to the chair.
On the agenda item, agenda item.
Uh, excuse me, sir. Okay, so I have a few questions as far as ordinance number five. What does this entail?
The city of Pleasantville participates in program called Sustainability. And what that does is it allows us to have access to eligible for specific grants for sustainability. So we are a part of that program. We're in the process of certifying. And one of the criteria is to support solo projects throughout our community. So it doesn't, it's not for a specific program. It's just indicating that the city supports solo.
Um, I have number three ordinance number eight. Will this increase the taxes?
No, we have, by the state of New Jersey, we're able to increase the taxes. So if we never come here, we're not doing that much. And what we do, we put it to a cap bank. For some reason, two year after two year, that's what we're having to use that. And we now do is we're only putting money aside.
Okay, and ordinance ninety-two, ordinance number six. The work isn't being contracted out?
Ordinance number six.
The formula.
Yes, we will be, we will be, we will send it out.
Um, do you know how much revenue that the city generates net from the sewer? How much does the city net from the sewer asset?
Oh, so this is full pay?
How much should be done to the city net? How much do they net, not gross net?
Net, restaurant?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I'm close. Our gross collection for stores is not a man. Or next time we give our board, let's say.
I'm sorry.
Fifty-seven.
Okay, um, this is for everyone else. I think we're probably finished with that question. Um, how many employees operate the sewers?
Three.
Okay, and how long have these grants been sitting for the repair of the codes?
Probably twenty-five months.
Twenty-four months. So what stopped the repairs from being done?
Infrastructure modification.
How will stop the repairs from being done? Why this grant now is a burden? When do these grants expire to recover?
We, the grants were expired in the minute and then it wasn't.
So we're running against the clock. When this could have been done, don't we?
The, we had started pursuing the project eighteen months ago. We're on the twenty-nine. But when we talked about the process of trying to store possession agreement, we backed out of it, waiting for the store possession agreement. So we're going to push back a little. We wanted to throw a good money at the bad. So we stopped everything, the profit, we're doing it again.
We're doing what?
Borrowing money for.
And how does this affect the taxes?
It should not affect taxes.
But it's four million dollars. And if you're trying to understand, because if there's a sewer deal that's supposed to be going on and you stopped and it's negotiations, it's not set in stone. Why couldn't a business as usual happen? So that the residents aren't sitting up here suffering. And now a pair still hadn't been made. And now we're still asking for taking money out.
You started to go ahead and sort and process that down. Of the, the way we would have lost the head of the grant.
I understand, but there seems to be a pattern where we're holding up stuff in hopes of something else. Where we should be taking care of the city and residents. And I'm just disturbed that we're taking out four million dollars. How much will we need to prepare the whole sewers?
Everything.
Everything, so that we know. Because this four million dollars is a fraction. So what's the total cost?
If we were to invest in our source for some hundred million dollars.
You said eight hundred million dollars?
Uh, okay.
I'm sorry, for money?
One hundred.
Oh, one hundred.
So fifty-five.
Okay, so one hundred million. Did you, where did you get that fifty-five?
My engineers.
I'm sorry.
Our engineers.
Okay, so what happened? The engineers said yeah? And the engineers said yeah?
Yes.
Okay, I just don't think this is right. Four million dollars, we're taking out a bond, and we were in limbo with this sewer deal. It's just not making sense, it's not adding up. Is all the money going to this contract? For the four million dollars, is all this money that we're going to pay for the repairs?
We would borrow up to four million dollars. And to have the money, we would borrow from fixed units, Harrison, Prospect, the care, park, uh, Dally, and, uh, well, I can't remember.
Where's the RFP for these repairs? So that I can see what the, what the bond is and then what the expenses are.
We have, we have, we have, we have, we have.
The RFP, where's the RFP?
We put up this, we have put up this right now for Harrison, Tunis, and, um, we're stuck up. That's where we're working at.
And how much is it?
The total cost for the repair is six hundred forty-two thousand dollars. Only about two hundred thousand dollars on the bond. The other, the grant, the department, the position.
So why are we taking out so much? Again, if it's only six.
Because that's only for a street. You have other, you have another half million dollars for anybody who are, sometimes we take that part, I don't know. We also need other infrastructure repairs. We have another grant pending. It won't be another year, we're smart. We need to do those repairs.
So why can't it be put in the same bill list so they can all be taken care of? And since we're already taking.
We probably haven't been. We probably didn't want, which is pretty hard for our clients.
Right, but why wasn't it added to that? We, you all already done, you all already know, right? Why wasn't it added? Four million dollars, but it's only six, almost six hundred thousand. You two, that's not adding up. I'm sorry, that's not adding up. Somebody needs to check these numbers. I, it's the last one, external audit has been done. I, I think it's the last one, an external audit has been done. An external audit.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry.
We don't ever hear.
No, no, not you, an external company.
External company.
Where, remember from last month?
June of last year.
June of last year.
And then process of doing one for twenty-one.
And what's the company?
Roman.
Roman.
Roman and Associates.
Okay, so can I?
The T P A.
I can look at the four million dollars?
Absolutely.
Okay, because this is not adding up, I'm sorry.
Okay. Many questions before the vote. Three minutes. Take that.
My name is Kathleen Spade, and I live in Limbo. Can you hear me? Thank you. Uh, it's very hard to hear you tonight, I appreciate that we're here in this building, because we had the uh, pen, pens, everything, accommodations, but I would really appreciate it for some of us who have a little bit of our type hearing, if you could speak directly into the microphone like I'm doing right now. Um, considering, and a question that I have, and I want to thank Ms. Noel for all of the lovely questions this evening, is you're, you're looking at a general obligation bond for four million dollars. I expected there to be some discussion tonight with the breakdown of exactly what that four million dollars was going to cover. Usually when you take out a bond for four million dollars, there is, you list exactly what's going to be used, and what the term of the bond is, and what your interest rate is. So what's your principal, and what's your interest, I think that's the first thing I'd like to know.
At the time, you don't have an interest rate. If you had the time, you would not have an interest rate. The bond will offer bid, and we will get the dollar situation. We, we can ask a number of banks and finance companies, they will bid on four, four million dollars, they will protect you. Now, this is one term for term, we did bond now, it's a point two five percent. That's less than about quarter percent of the money we borrowed. But what the bond rate right now, I can't tell, we haven't done more.
Okay, so the market has changed, as we know, and the world is open, friends, we're spending on taxes, maybe we all know about that. So you are gonna, don't know exactly what you're going to get for the interest rate, but you're one of our four million dollars. So usually, uh, I know we all like to compare one segment to the other, but in my city of Limbo, when they ask for a four million dollar bond, they know exactly what their interest rate is going to be, and they know exactly what the principal is going to be. Why is it different to you, because I'm missing something?
Well, I don't know how the people know, the people who figure this in pre-negotiation. We have to be around the pen, to be around the, at probably R P O teams, and after fifty different people. Looking at that rate before, we don't want to, we don't want to go through for a day. Hey, if you borrow four million dollars and wait, we've seen it happen, one to fifty different people. They gave us the best number that they can, and that figures to the bottom.
Okay, I, I appreciate your, your explanation. But you're looking at buying four million dollars as total, or is that four million plus the interest? Or are you going to make sure that you cover the interest in this four million dollars?
You say this, we borrow up to four million dollars. We will probably not perform it right now, to point to twenty-seven. And as, this will be, we can, we can, then on, you're going to go on the frequency of power, but so, we're an additional device. We don't have probably what even there to hand, it's good for the the bill you're going to borrow, additional money is taken, but you don't have to borrow four million dollars.
Okay, and I'm a little confused, because Ms. Noel asked a question about what the tax impact is going to be. Why would, I'm going to point, I'm going to point this to the council place.
Yes, he answered the question.
Uh, why wouldn't there be an impact to the average taxpayer who owns a home in the city of Pleasantville? Are you absorbing the four million dollars into your existing budget, or is this on your existing budget?
This will be part of the store budget, not tax budget. And as you were talking before, the store had that in the history since two thousand and ten. It will probably be a, you want to pretend it is from your end, if it would not, the wind, store agreement, so total, based on my projections, it'll probably cost a total of, for the years, about eighty thousand dollars.
Okay, but you just mentioned, uh, through you, Mr. Chair, that this, the, the sewer enterprise account doesn't have money for this bond. I'm trying to figure out, where are the funds that come from the sewer at, when you're not making enough revenue to pay for this bond? It doesn't take, it, it happens to figure out, I'm sorry, I'm having a real hard time understanding this concept here. And I feel like I'm a dog chasing a tail, so if you could kindly explain this to me, because I'm sick chasing a tail.
Wait, I think the projection, if you do not sell, transfer, store, property, company center, we give them two ten degrees on the five hundred. That will cover, take care of the present, and interest for one year. And we're talking about, probably total, I got to you.
So in other words, you're telling the residents right now, even if I'm asking these questions, that they can expect their sewer bills, just in the first year alone, to go up two and a half, three percent, and already have the bond money they're borrowing?
If the rent is projected, I would do two percent, three percent. That will take care of the interest rate, but we still have this opportunity to additionally pay this.
Okay, um, I'm going to make a comment here, because I'm really upset with this. These residents have the right to know what their sewer bill is going to be. They have a right to know what it's going to be on a quarterly basis and on a yearly basis. Not to criticize you, it just sounds like you're hedging, you're not sure you're going to possibly want four million. You're looking at right now, a farm, six, seven, eight, two thousand. They have a right to know, and I appreciate your time, thank you.
To the council, I'm very, I appreciate that. I have a question about this, agenda item, and I'd kind of want to hear from you. I want to hear from some of y'all members from the council, if that, if that's possible. See you, that person I hear has a lot of questions for him. Uh, but in any case, is this four million dollars being done in lieu of this Bernhard Capital Partners transaction that had been being discussed previously?
No. No.
If we do improvements to the sewer system now, the city of Pleasantville, what do we need Bernhard?
Exactly.
Right?
Right.
And even if somehow, some way, Bernhard comes in, their whole deal has got to be renegotiated, because we've already fixed every problem, right? So why would they, why would we want them to charge us to save them out? When we have fixed our infrastructure? So in my opinion, yes, it is taking place in Bernhard.
Okay, council wants to say no.
That's why they're saying.
Which, which one is it? I mean, first of all, let me, first of all, let me applaud you for being creative to find out a great solution to that contract. Because as someone who's very proud of that man, for Mr. Manager of Water Engineering, and is a licensed realtor, man, from that deal, really did that well. So I'm glad to see this as an alternative, but it's a question as to whether or not it's replacement, or is it going to be addition too? You said yes, councilman Sisra said no. Councilman Sisra, can you rely?
Glad you brought that up. I hold my comments to the bar, I don't want my comments to, I'm going to hold my comments to the I think you've heard it before, I think, uh, those that are here in the audience have heard it before, we have a ten million dollar settlement, and seven hundred and ten. And we were the all-star committee, we're ten million, so. And what we have, we expect ten times better. Um, continue on.
What you have, this four million dollar deal is better?
No, no, no. I'm talking about the concessions agreement. Concessions agreement.
So you're, you're a disclaimer with the council on that? I'm just trying, I want to have clarity for this.
A little bit for the concessions. Yes.
Okay, so so the coun, the council itself does not have an informed agreement on which way we're going with this? I, I just want to understand, because I'm a little confused. Can you, can you give it to my side?
Agenda items. You have a question? Agenda items.
Well, my question is, does this deal reverse that? You said no, she said yes, I'm trying to get clarity. Is that our reason? Anyone?
So I think it's a question as to which council agrees on which council doesn't agree. But what, what I can say, and I think that Ms. Noel was right on point when she asked the question, and then you come behind her with follow-up. For us, for myself, being a resident of this community, and being, uh, in the seat that I'm in, our CFO, we have gotten authorization from council committee to come up with a creative way to continue to move our city forward while they're in Limbo with this concession agreement. It's not fair to you, uh, it's not fair to the taxpayers, uh, not to what, you know, what's for them. And the issue is, is that there's so many moving parts to this, and it's challenging to try to explain it at council meetings. But one of the problems that our city faces most of the time is, uh, trying to coordinate all of the grants that again, are going to be bonding or leveraging, uh, projects. So the issue with the impetus of our streets is that as we assess all of our streets throughout the community, we realize that we have a deteriorating infrastructure. And most of those streets qualify for New Jersey Department of Transportation funding to help improve the streets, but we can't utilize that unless we can be infrastructure. So when you ask the question, this, this appears to be a pattern. It's not a pattern, it's just trying to come up with a way to coordinate so that we don't lose these grants. So we got to the point where we are at a point where we were potentially getting ready to lose the grants, and we said, well, how can we continue to move the city forward so that two years from now, one year from now, however much time it takes for the, for this, um, elected body to determine whether or not they're going to do concessionaire agreement, we still have to get our streets to be. And that's what this four million dollars is about today. To answer the question to one of, I think, your, your comment, do we have the money to, to, uh, to offset for the bond? We do, we have that through our water stream, through the sewer. So if we not put the bond out, I think it was just not heard because of the, the environment that we're in. But, um, you will not see a tax, uh, or sewer increase because of this bond, because we do have the money to offset that. So the, the purpose of this ordinance is to not lose the N J D O T funding so that we can get the infrastructure done and the road movement done. And, uh, we prioritize our streets, and so this will cover up to about eight streets. We identified the first six, and then we have to do the cost estimates for the others. And this is why we set up the four million dollars, so that we can include the additional streets as we get the cost estimates. So I hope that was helpful.
That, that, that helped a lot. And I, and I appreciate the creativity in trying to find alternative ways that the Bernhard capital, uh, issue. Because if the government is to truly buy the people, buy the people, the people have said no to that. And as publicly elected officials, you represent the people, and they've said no to the Bernhard capital, so we don't want that, just to be fair. We might have to.
I just thought
No, uh, excuse me, no, excuse me, no, you can't go back to the back of it, excuse me, cannot go back to the
I, I, I can see what you mean.
Cannot go back to the
Good evening, city council, we are The question that she wanted to ask was why this single three mile, the day of prayer?
That's not right.
Hello, the day of prayer is always the first Thursday in May. We got a good day off on a single mile, which is seventeen years, it hasn't been May, and it's the first Thursday in May. So it just happens to fall that way.
Anyone else in the public? See if anyone, most of the public portion. All the favor, all seven. Now we have council. On the road. Remember? Okay, and then to most of those who work next to me. All the favors, all seven.
Good evening, this is City of Pleasantville, City Council meeting, agenda. The day's date is May second, twenty twenty-two, the time is seven fifty-five. This meeting has been newly advertised, and the city's newest book informs of meeting that, otherwise known as a sunshine ball. Need stand for the implication, flag. My father, John, John Henry, all the hundreds, created work, working on, on earth, and the earth, and the earth. Thank you, Ben, 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 give the trespassers, especially the trespassers cases. It is what happens, it's mutations, of the purpose, all you, that's changing power, glory, forever. Where's the letters to the flag, the United States of America? To the world, which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice, law.
Go both. Swan, Dan, and the other, Thomas, Memorial, Green, Sister, five of the Thomas.
The meeting of minutes. Good business. All the favor.
Aye.
All seven. There are several, um, these are part of
Nothing else, thank you. Okay, first of all, in this order, is five, second, meeting, coming here will be held, and support solo energy in the city.
Anyone for the public? Most of the speakers. Time four. See you all.
Yeah, most of them, yeah. Most of them. Yeah, most of them. So noted, Roque, Tyler, Thomas, the woman. Korea, Sis from, ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance number six, second amendment, public area will be bound, authorize various improvements, repairs, and/or replacement of sewer lines in the city, appropriate for four million dollars, therefore, authorize emissions and general obligations. Appropriate the sum of four million dollars, therefore authorize for issuance of general obligation bonds for bond anticipation goals in American, flexible amount of up to four million dollars. Make certain determinations and covenants, authorize certain related actions and connection with the board.
Um, so I have a question, are you going to go for the total of the money yet? Or is it going to be peaceful where you're taking and being a platform or issuing multiple bonds?
It'll be the total of the money, you know, we don't need all of it to go on the term. But at least we'll have it there, um, as a process, as a connect to, um, to see if we need it and that it will be realized in the morning.
And how, how long before you know when the bonds will be purchased? Or that it's completed, completed or issued?
The process for the.
How long did you, maybe you should know? You should know, and then that's when people know the rate and all that?
Yes.
And how will that information be available, or does it have to be the question? Um. I mean, I'm sorry, but your business manager, it's information.
No, no, I just want to make sure you get the right information, so there's nothing to apologize, I want to make sure.
Except I'm hearing that he's just the numbers guy, as far as my, I'm just, you know, saying he's the numbers guy, but if it's information, I just want to.
I'd say, and it, it would be information, it'll be available, of course, so you can contact my office, the police office, and you can get the information, but it does not have to come back through council, that's, that's what I was asking, to see if.
Um, and so when this four million is done, is it in one account separate from other accounts? Or where would be housed, or how would the category be housed?
It'll be housed in the sewer, you know.
Like, so then all the other revenue effects will be going in that same account as well?
Yes.
So you won't be able to differentiate that this is allocated from payers?
It would be, it would be, it's just like a bank account, you know which money is there. I advise, um, members in our system to go know what money to use for what purpose.
And so will you update it, like, say exactly?
Yes.
Three point two million, and how would I get that information, like, as it's diminishing?
Contact us when you need.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Kathleen Spade, I live in, live in New Jersey. So going back to records number six, where we get to ask questions, um, I need it clarified for the record. So you're going to possibly add up to four million dollars. Um, it was mentioned that there could be a two and a half percent increase in sewer rates in the first year to borrow six hundred forty-two thousand. Then it was mentioned that there won't be an increase in sewer rate, which is.
Hello, I think, um, question is, is understood, is true.
So you're telling me on the record that there's enough money generated in the sewer revenue account after expenses are paid, that you'll be able to cover this bond and its interest in the four million dollar amount without increasing sewer rates to the residents for the first year, or is that throughout the bar here?
I just do not know, here.
Great, it's wonderful, here, I'd like to see those photos. Get to comment as well as ask questions, okay? Um, thank you very much, appreciate it. Thank you, this is, um, more of a comment than a question. I, I came here to ask the question, to ask council to maybe pump the brakes a little bit on the, um, sewer negotiation. Um, and this four million dollars is.
We're talking about this, this night.
I'm talking about the four million dollars, okay. Four million dollars is, as I see it, that, that opportunity to look around and be creative and use other resources that may be available to the city of Pleasantville, because the people really have been vocal about this. And I want to say thank you for doing that, thank you for looking around and trying to make this work without going so far into debt with the agreement that you were considering going.
More questions?
Urban residents of Pleasantville, I just want to verify that this is a general obligation bond, correct? So what is the risk that tax, taxes for residents of Pleasantville will need to be raised in order to cover this bond? What's the risk? Is there a, um, certain percentage?
The bond, not general obligation bond? They are, they are ordered to, it says sewer. Anybody think of the sewer capital fund? Paid out of the sewer until. With no general obligation to the city, we have done a, a lot of. Bonds that, that take over our waters, and you put the normal stuff up there, which means sewer capital paid for, you know, the bond, and no tax power.
Okay, so there's no possibility that this will raise taxes in Pleasantville?
Not because of that, no.
Okay, so the, the possibility is that sewer, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so then my question is, what is the city's response to go out to the New Jersey Infrastructure Bank? To cover this deal, to cover these sewer money payers? Has the city approached the Infrastructure Bank?
We have, obviously, we approached the Infrastructure Bank, the IBAC. They're looking at maybe three or four months down, knowing before they even have a determination. We did this in conjunction with bond, because we know there would be a rate for the IBAC. What's going to happen is, if we borrow this money and we get paid back by Infrastructure, Infrastructure, we'll take that money, nearly every pay that people borrowed will be borrowed from.
Okay, so you said there was a three to four month lead time for the Infrastructure Bank, and then back to the city will reply.
Right.
But the grants have been sitting for how many months? How, how, how long were the grants sitting?
We, we've worked with the IBAC partners since February. Uh, they were.
How long you working with the IBAC earlier? Were you at twenty-four months?
Yeah.
An additional three months, if they said, they want, I'd say between three and six months to go through the paperwork, or, or, I would say, the periodic mutations of, of grants. They, the old information that they forward, we set up the number engineer, I expect, the drawing, whatever has to be done, that depends. But once they make the determination, we're eligible, we will be able to donate that in the draw.
So you talked, reached out to the IBAC, or started that application in February this year?
In February.
This, this year, in February, okay, thank you.
Peace and love to all, I just have a question. Will this, uh, four million bond have to go in front of the, uh, local financial board for approval?
No.
Thank you.
Living in Pleasantville, I believe I heard that there was funds from a funded program to prepare the streets in Pleasantville, is that correct? If you're referring to the road, uh, the pavement and our infrastructure? Yes, there is, uh, there is a plan to take the bond. Okay, is that for all the streets in Pleasantville? That's for the streets that we apply for, so is that, uh, specific to a street is a dollar amount, and then we identify the street. Okay, and then, and when does that expire? When do you have to have those roads repaired? Or doesn't it have an expiration date?
It also has an expiration date, this is why, this is the helpful question that came before you. Um, because of the expiration dates is the reason why we don't let this turn the ground to bond so that we do not lose those funding. So, uh, each year you can apply for the financial guarantee, that if, that if there, if, if you do see that that is our two-year period, we must, um, at least start the process. Okay, so if we move, and we don't have these roads repaired that you've identified, then we'll have to turn that money back to the state. And then you would have to reapply after your infrastructure is done, or just reapply, reapply, fill what you need to.
Which means there's no guarantee that you'll get that money back. So in the event that we don't get that money, how will we pay for the repairs of our roads?
We have to look for other options, this is why we're, this is why we're sitting here talking about the bond today. We have to look at various, uh, ways, but then if you don't, if you come up with that funding from any state or federal government, we're looking at, uh, taxing pieces.
Okay. That's all, thank you.
Anyone else from the public from listening to this?
So, according to your residence, you want to tell the four million, this is where you would get the insurance? The concessionary is moving, right? How do they put together? How does the concessionary as a moving go along with order number six?
Order number six?
Yeah.
We had state, we had grants, for years, we had state grants, and, and, and differently. And as you, uh, as you know, they only take care of the surface. So what we would have to do is turn it back, as we don't have enough money to do the infrastructure. So infrastructure is needed to, um, to, to, so, so we can, so we don't have to turn this, this money back. So we ought to turn this money back, and that's the reason why we came up with this, uh, this creative way of, uh, of trying to make this deal, which we have already, concessions agreement.
So with your concession agreement, if I understand you correctly, this concession agreement, the contractor, the guys putting the warranty to, to help us with, with this number six, we guys, they want to. Pleasantville Environmental Partners, could I get a little bit of information about that? That this contractor is going to be with for the concessionary agreement? No, could I understand, is Pleasantville Environmental Partners all C, right? Is that a part of this concessionary agreement? Yes. And with that being said, because that company looks like it was created in the twenty-twenty, my correct? So with that being said, can I, can we find out the residents and taxpayers? Can we see a Pleasantville? Can we find out who CEO is, and what directors? Who formed Pleasantville Environmental Partners, all C? And they did this in the state of Illinois, not in New Jersey? Can we get some information with that? Be concerned with that information, excuse me, be concerned with that information, what we're trying to do. Okay, and would you mind, would it include the CEO, the president, the officers, the board of directors? And if you have access to show, you might be able to, as residents, taxpayers, we're sitting in the middle. I think it just leave you your core information, I guess, all that, thank you.
Anybody making, uh, this endeavor, was it sent out for, uh, our, the team, or the day?
Uh, what is that saying?
I'm talking about the, uh, the, 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 we, we have to stay with the Jedi, I, 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 I. Answer your question real quick, yes. Anyone else from the public? Say if anyone.
This is not a question to call the public.
No, the motion to call, the motion.
The motion to roll call.
Say.
Roll call, Fennelara?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yeah.
The moment? Korea? Siscon?
Yes.
Order is adopted. Order is number eight, second meeting, coming here, is required to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits into establishing a category.
What is something? Anyone from the public this time?
I have a question in reference to what was the limit before? Or now, or when you're changing it from, changing to, because I kind of really don't understand it, as I've been trying to say it earlier.
This is something the state requires us to adapt. The state allows us to increase taxes by three hundred percent. But basically, if we should, if we just, if we don't do that, if we don't have money to do it, we can set money aside for some time in the future. If for some reason we have a tax draw in the debt, we may have to accept that money. But there's actually no impact to that parent of this, it would set money as potential, potential money in the side for later on.
Um, so the percentage will stay the same, is what you're saying? The percent, the increase in percent for the rates will stay the same? But it's just a allotment or permission given to increase, I'm just trying to understand.
So I'm not, I'm not, except it's money, we're not bringing taxes, this is just an opportunity to put money aside. This is for some reason, in future years, we need more money than we have.
Um, did you get approved by the state yet, or did they review it yet?
State has a budget, they will, they, we have, they will set up to the last two of them, uh, two weeks ago. They have three weeks to review it, and, uh, we, I'm at, it'll say here in April, before next month.
So why not vote on it now if it hasn't been moved by the state yet?
This is, this is a ordinance that the state required before they finalized the budget.
I thought the state had to look over it first and then make a vote.
It, it's two different.
I'm sorry?
It's two different things. One of the budget, they have approved. This is a cap ordinance, but it required approval before we submit the budget for their total revenue.
Okay, so you're saying this vote is just to establish that you can have one?
Correct. We already have a cap act, because that includes.
Okay, but usually isn't that based on the budget? So if it's based on the budget, that's why the state is reviewing it, right?
We have done a budget where we would not exceed the money. We're looking at raising six hundred fifty thousand dollars in taxes. Well, I will move through over a million dollars. We're not doing that. The difference, we put it to a cap act. The state would review our budget based on all the income, the income respected, all the budgets we have booked at. And they will decide, yeah, well, we either underbilled it or overbilled it, and they will make the decision. Three hundred plus thousand dollar money for a cap act, this has nothing to do with the budget.
Okay, so wait, let me just, let me just try to process this. So we're saying, okay, we can only, you said thirty million dollars, right? Um, the cap says, okay, you can go to thirty-five million, or how does that work?
It's based on, it's based on, I ended up raising their share, which was twenty, twenty-five, twenty-three million dollars. Add three hundred percent on that, that's what we could raise the budget, but we did not do that.
Yeah, I get that, I get that. It sounds like a little bit of a threat, like, oh, we could raise it. So that's not what I'm trying to understand, I'm just trying to understand how it works in relation to getting approved if the state is supposed to review it.
Actually, we could, we could raise it, we could raise it, man, no.
Okay.
Okay, and that would hit taxpayers or.
But there's no kind of threat there, so I'm not, I'm not trying to say, oh, you can raise it. I just want to understand. So you can do this, y'all can vote on it prior to the state reviewing your budget?
Because we like moving that money.
But that's not what I'm saying. What I'm trying to say is, any township or municipality, usually to do that, the state reviews you first, that way when they vote on it, everything is clear. I'm just saying, you're telling me that y'all can vote on it and the state has not approved it? The budget is saying, okay, everything is good, y'all can have that protection or whatever.
State has not approved the budget.
They didn't approve it. But you're gonna vote on something that the state didn't approve?
It's, it's a formality for the state to do this.
I'm sorry?
It's a formality, but we have to approve this because the state know that we have seen possibility of raising taxes, but we're not going to. They have to, they also look at the ordinance that's been passed by council. And yet they're aware of the tank rate. And that's what the state approves. If they look at their budget, they're going to say, fine, you approve that idea, they can prove it, but you're not.
Okay, so that, that the state approves. When they say yes or no, so when they're saying yes, they're saying what?
The state, the state will approve the budget if they want to. They will look at their budgets based on how we've raised them. And they will say, okay, this is a reasonable budget for a city, but it was unreasonable budget for a city. This cap act has nothing to do with the state approved the budget.
Okay, so if it's deemed unreasonable, it seems like it relates to this vote. And I would think that would be important to know if your budget is unreasonable or reasonable so that you have this, that you're voting. That's, that's what I'm saying, maybe I should hold off on the vote because it seems like you need that data to make a fully informed decision.
Yes.
Right?
No.
If you are, if you have an unreasonable budget, or if you have a reasonable budget, that would affect how I vote to increase or have a cushion. That would be important information, like a balance for the checkbook. Am I going, am I overdrafting a lot? And I shouldn't even say, okay, yeah, let me keep, keep a higher amount of overdrafting because I don't know how managing money or managing it well. And so you're a low risk, so you can have that cap and that protection. That's what I'm saying, y'all should hold off on.
Anyone else for the public?
Can you hear me? My name is Kathleen Spain, and I live in Hollywood. Um, and just to clarify, you said that you're looking at three and a half percent increase um, over your municipal budget appropriation limits into establishing cap bank. So you mentioned that could be possibly six hundred and fifty thousand, you could go up to a million dollars. Are you looking at six hundred and fifty thousand? Did I understand that correctly? I'm sorry, Dick, you seem here tonight as like I'm fishing a block in a bottle, in a bowl. I don't need to keep asking the same questions, but it's hard to hear.
By passing this resolution, we could have raised a million dollars in taxes. We went through the budget, and we only raised in six hundred sixty-five thousand. And that's after the state had mandated a million dollar expenses that we didn't have.
And is the intent then to take the six hundred sixty-five thousand and then to possibly apply it towards ordinance number six, uh, which would be the four million dollars that maybe you might provide? Two different things. So do we have a right to know what your intent is to do with the six hundred sixty-five thousand? Are you going to put it in a bank and bank it? Or are you going to use it somewhere else in the budget?
The six hundred sixty-five thousand to pay for all the benefits, payroll for police and fire, utilities, insurance, maintaining the vehicles, electric, gas, everything else. Our budget is thirty-three million dollars. We are raising the taxpayers, flew over twenty-three million. Terrible numbers, but we have raised this week the budget, my office and I for the last seven weeks, to get the tax rate down as well as we possibly could. Like I said, there, there's a bunch of areas where the state has mandated additional million dollars in expenses for 2022 that we had no tool. And be able to save money, take money from the regular rescue fund plan to reduce our taxes as much as we can. Tax rates are probably going to be twenty-eight cents, one hundred, a half, a certain hundred and ten thousand dollars, maybe a ninety-seven dollar per year tax additional. This is something we don't like, and a high person don't like. But we have to maintain the city, payroll, police, fire, and everything else we do with town.
I, I appreciate you going through the list of, of all of the items that you have to deal with and to explain to me and residents tonight. I really appreciate it greatly. Thank you. And it isn't until we start asking questions, then we get answers. So I appreciate your patience tonight to explain it to residents very much. Thank you.
Anyone else for the public? Say it again, motion for roll call? I would feel, I was having.
A motion for roll call, please? Roll call, Fennelara?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Cebona? Korea?
Yes.
Sisram?
Yes.
Ornis Adada? Resolution eighty-seven, completed May the fifth, 2022, as National Day of. Roll call, Fennelara?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Cebona?
Yes.
Korea?
Yes.
Sisram?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution eighty-eight, awarding contractor improvements to units, now racing across back avenues to Lexi Concrete, with their amount of six hundred forty-three thousand, four hundred seventy-six hours, zero cents. Roll call, Fennelara?
Yes.
Thomas? Cebona? Corbin?
Yes.
Sisram?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution eighty-nine, authorizing the assignment of municipal certificates to telephone prescription for a reward.
Necessary.
Something that come up? Roll call, Fennelara?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Korea? Cebona? Sisram?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution ninety, adopting a certified and updated review of various sectors of personnel policies and securities manual.
Motion.
Roll call, Fennelara?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Cebona? Korean?
Yes.
Sisram? Resolution approved. Resolution ninety-one, authorizing issuance and sale of two hundred fifty thousand, four hundred seventy-five hours to special emergency rooms of the city, making certain covens to maintain the exemption of the entries on said laws for federal income taxation, and authorizing such further actions and making such determinations as may be necessary and appropriate to effectuate the issuance and sale of those. Roll call, Fennelara?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Cebona? Korean?
Yes.
Sisram?
Yes.
Resolution approved, will be in motion to approve the buildings. Roll call, Fennelara?
Yes.
Thomas? Cebona? Korean?
Yes.
Sisram? Motion approved, next is called a question.
Next is called a question, anyone for the public? Next is called a question, anyone for the public, please speak, please come forward.
Please know that there's a waiting for that to open a question. And unfortunately, I might give what you want to come up with.
Good evening, everyone. It's Tim Jones, professor resident. I have the pleasure of going through the documents that we received on the going to the submission to the local finance board, six hundred something pages of documents. It was a very interesting review, really giving a lot of details how we ended up where we are with this new concession deal. I would just like to, it was written, a comment that was made on December sixth, evening. Though I may have heard about a similar deal in Bayonne, Jersey, that was done around seven years ago. It involved, I was involved in that deal, again representing the developers. Same structure though, that the deal also involved a water delinquency. It's been a sound success. It's been a win-win for the city of Bayonne. It's been a win-win for the investors in the deal. We want to replicate that type of success here in the city of Pleasantville. Now here's an article to our paper that really demonstrates what that deal was about in Bayonne. In twenty twenty, in twenty twelve, under Mayor Marksman, the city was strapped for cash to sell with pumping water and sewer for structure. Seeking relief, Bayonne entered a deal with United Port, now Suez, a private equity, KKR, KKR, to overtake its port operation for forty years. In exchange, a guaranteed revenue stream for forty years, United and KKR paid a hundred fifty million dollars in front and agreed to contribute two and a half million dollars in capital projects, and it combined one million dollars for repairs and operations and everything. In twenty eighteen, KKR sold their estate to private equity fund Argon Infrastructure Partners. After that deal took effect, the water rates jumped eight point five percent. A four-year rate freeze promised by the city never materialized. Rates were steady in twenty fourteen, but increased by four percent again in two thousand fifteen. In two thousand sixteen, rates jumped up thirteen point two five percent, followed by a three and a half percent increase in two thousand seventeen, four and a half percent in two thousand eighteen, nine point one percent in two thousand nineteen, four point one percent in two thousand twenty, and four percent this year. This cooling effect of all rate hikes means a two hundred dollar quarter year bill in the year twenty twelve, now costing Bayonne residents three hundred and twenty-six dollars and sixty-eight cents every three months. Bayonne Mayor Jimmy Davis did not respond to the question comment. Now, if we want to get out of this, we want them out of our lives. We have to give them the value of the contract itself. That bill will be a hefty price tag. Brother this month had a meeting with representatives from Suez and Argon, the city council spent how much such a liability cost? The answer, over three hundred million dollars. A legal patient, a legal payment issued days ago by the city contracted law firm came up with similar feelings. Now being mindful folks, this is a deal that was promoted by a young guy in the civil system meeting when he promoted this movie of all to all your city council. He made it sound great, not have the transfers. They said so many erroneous and dumb talk things, they went over so many people's heads, I'm sure. They made things sound good, they made so many promises. They said promises, and that's what I have to say. We will give you a minimum of one point six million dollars a year for thirty-three years. But if the contractor says no more than one point four million dollars a year for thirty-three years, that's a granted benefit. Maybe give you nothing and satisfy you on one point four million dollars. And a minimum of one point four million dollars is not in the contract. It's very important for you to understand the value for entering this city into such agreement. This is the Bayonne issue, ladies. As far as the question was asked about who is the representative of Bayonne, I said, oh, if you're a professional about to make a decision, you better answer that question. The reality is, nobody would know. One archivist complained, and back in the roots, it's set this up, so no one would even know who gets the money when we make our payments. Five thousand three dollars goes into an account, and you have no idea what's popping out in the process. And you said that at night long. You need to be aware of the slurs, you need to be aware of the slurs. This is how this deal is set up. You know, I think there's, there's good intentions, they try to enjoy it. But these guys are scatters, these are hustlers. And everything in this contract says so. It's the, the contract is over a hundred twenty-five pages. Please, don't go into Pleasantville, it's a disaster.
Good evening. As far as, I'm going to tell you what the gentleman said about Bernhardt. Uh, my name is Jerry Kim, professor resident, former five for. I just did a little, like, to deal with this one, Bernhardt. And there are capital investment firm, hedge fund. And for those people who aren't financially savvy, they don't understand that these guys would rather have their money in a project like this and make these crazy returns than to have a city bank that's only paying two times the payment per year. They don't care about Pleasantville. This is a strictly a money investment. And when you go to their website, they have an icon that says portfolio. When I click on that icon, on that icon, it shows all the water systems and the sewer systems and the engineering systems and the electrical systems that they have invested in various businesses and properties all over the United States that they're getting these ridiculous returns from. And it's like they give you a mandate or a final, give you a hundred million or two hundred million, but then they pay back four hundred million on the back end. Yes, it meets the current capital needs and takes care of the current situations with sewer and so forth. But in the long run, it's like a buy here, pay here agreement. Where you pay five to seven times back, what? You know, they have a paper. And at the end of the day, these guys are heartless investors. When I wrote down Wall Street, my first job out of college, I saw these guys every day. And I'm like, these guys are merciless. They will lie to your face and not blink. They're still out of their mother's pocket and not even care. These are the people you're dealing with. Slisters and gangsters and suits. That's all they are. They have all of these municipalities listed as investments in their portfolio, which on their website.
Lieutenant Cameron Tan, Pleasantville resident. I'd like to appeal to the council. I read the contract. Anything that I didn't understand, I took it to people who did. And when I read the contract, I saw a whole lot of wood wick. Do you know why they can walk wickers? Because they're strapped for honey and they're grassy and strong. I want to appeal to you, you need to listen to us. And maybe you need to read that contract again. I know and believe that you invested a lot of time trying to get the deal. But don't let this deal get you. Pleasantville is going to be a ghost town. We're gonna go under because of this idiotic deal. Who makes deals like this?
Nobody.
Who makes deals like this? Sure, the seventh year firstborn, this, this deal sucks. And we're gonna be left here holding the bag. Everybody on city council who owns property in Pleasantville? Does everybody on city council own their property in Pleasantville?
No, no. Question is, does everybody live in Pleasantville?
If you don't own the property, then you don't have a stake in this city. So it's much easier for you to sell us. Now I know, I heard, I hear the voices, I feel the churches and the voices because we're speaking out against all of our work. But we elected you to work hard. And we didn't elect you to sell us. If you don't understand what kind of contract you're in, get somebody who does. Because we're not gonna roll over the bloodline. Because you won't make that. I remember watching a TV show that's in the deal. And they had code number one, two, and three. And if you pick the wrong code. And if you picked the wrong door... What was the result? So you had to hope and pray that you picked the right door. But tell me you picked the wrong door.
Uh, Lady Karen, Pleasantville. I missed the past two or three meetings, but the one meeting that I witnessed was a complaint about various individuals coming from outside Pleasantville. Ms. Candy, I appreciate you.
Yep.
Somebody. There was a young lady from Linwood, Ms. Candy, Northville, somewhere down, off St. Andrew, right? And one of the councilmen made a comment. Where were you when Pleasantville was going through the shootings, the murders, this that and the other? But what I found strange? Bobby Laws, and I have a lot of respect for Bobby. He was here trying to push this bad deal on this city. But the same question was proposed to him. Do y'all remember that? Nobody remembers? Okay, so it goes both ways. Right, this is a bad deal. And if we have to get representatives, not only from Linwood, Northville, Bayonne, uh, 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 now I'm hearing, uh, Silverville, where you have to, you have to sit in another pan, uh, Suezville to, uh, uh, Tracy Love, because they're the same company. We will have, we will do that. Because this is a bad deal. You know, this is like, all of us are trying to get in shape. And we want that, like, we want that buffalo buck top, right? And we go to a train, and he tells us, "Let's do squats." You want to be on the bench, let's do squats. Does that make any sense to anybody? Does that make any sense? Neither does this deal. They are what we used to call back in the day, loan sharks. You ask somebody to attend, you gotta pay back the mortgage. And just like my wife said, if this deal goes through, Pleasantville will be a ghost town. If you don't care, which I know you don't, you don't care about us. You don't care about the city that you represent. From all my words, the minute you come out of my door for a vote, I might have some choice words for you. You don't have to do that, this is done, I'm done.
My name is Kathleen Spain, and I live in Linwood. I come here tonight not to tell you what to do. I come here to advise. I come here to question. I come here to support all my friends, some new ones, those who are proud, thank you, David. It's alarming to me to have read the MOU agreement and to do my research on the concession area and to just see things that don't make any sense to me. And I was at a portion of the public meeting that you held. And then I watched the rest that I didn't get to attend because I was at the Linwood meeting. So I needed to go and address some things in Linwood. And there's still so many questions that are unanswered. And I think the public and the residents have a right to know. For instance, if you get the, if you approve the MOU, right now, it's gonna go in front of the local finance board probably in the next few months. And if that gets approved, what's the impact on the residents' sewer rate? And their, how much they're paying? That was never answered. The cap index was never answered. The inflation rate was never answered. I'm sorry, but I looked at it briefly, and there's more holes in it than a piece of Swiss cheese. And I don't understand this. And I have a common background, and I don't understand it. What also made me very alarmed is the fact that the council said that they'd hire a consultant as a consultant to look at this agreement. But then, when that consultant couldn't answer the question during the public meetings, who did he refer to? He didn't refer to the council. He referred to one of the more non-partners, a gentleman sitting next to him to help him answer the question. How do you hire a consultant for the city who can't answer a basic question in the agreement but has to go over their phone to your past captain? That makes no sense to me. And they really, really think that the council is trying very hard not to understand under budget constraints, like everyone is. In Linwood, we have budget constraints. And I know a lot of people think we live in Linwood, we don't have budget constraints. We do. Just like the city of Pleasantville does in Northham and EHT. We have to try to work as much as we can. And I know this council is trying very hard tonight to do that and to answer the public's questions. But I really want you to go back and read the MOU. Hire a consultant. Hire an engineer to really take a look at your sewer system and see what needs to be repaired. I know, as Bayonne Ward mentioned, it's one of your biggest assets. And you wanna hold on to that asset. Everyone does. Open the newspaper. Look in Pennsylvania and New Jersey, there's been a number of wastewater facilities in different cities and towns that are being sold off. This is not the beginning and the end, unfortunately, for Pleasantville and many of them. So just make sure you're doing what's best for the whole of the citizens, please. That's why I'm here today. Not to tell you what to do, but just to listen to your residents. Thank you.
Good evening again. I'm here to speak against this, uh, my name is Dwayne Karen. Dwayne Karen. Uh, speaking against the water sewer plan that's put out there. It's a mature rule that says the residents are against it. I haven't dealt with it. I haven't dealt with the contract, so I can't speak on specifics. But I will tell you that I have over 30 years of municipal finance and just retired from municipal finance. Uh, the League of Municipalities, which is in Jersey, offers the services that it seems that this contract needs. So I urge you to hold back and seek further expert, non-biased information and advice.
President Alau, Pleasantville. So there's one thing that I've heard in previous meetings. It's in reference to the residents of Pleasantville contribution, specifically when it comes to the school budget. Now, I've heard it said, it's a bargain, it's only 8% of the total budget. But that 8% is a third of the city's budget, according to the city enumerate. At the previous meeting, it stated the budget's around 30 million. At the last meeting, it stated that via taxes, the residents are paying approximately 10 million for the school budget. So please, stop minimizing the people of Pleasantville's financial contribution, AKA taxes, to the school budget. And for this sewer deal, actually for the 8%, where do you compare it to? Do you live somewhere else where you have information that the Pleasantville residents are getting a deal? That's not fair to compare oranges to apples as far as the school budget. Any contribution that those residents make financially is, should be held viable. Do you have homes elsewhere? Because the way you talk about Pleasantville doesn't give me the confidence that you're wrong in. So talking about the state portion, this is about Pleasantville. Keep it about Pleasantville, we will speak. I say all that to say, as far as the sewer bill goes, sewer deal, bill, or whatever, um, this company, Viola, was the same company that was involved with the Michigan, Flint, Michigan deal. Right? So when Flint, Michigan had their system managed, it was through a public-private partnership. And that's how they got their infrastructure messed up. So when all that happened, that was a public-private partnership. It did not, okay? And when they do these calculations, financial calculations, they are calculating that there would be an increase in usage or an increase in population by up to 50%. Where can we fit an additional 50% of population in Pleasantville? Where is there gonna be an increase in the use of water when everybody's campaigning to be more frugal with our resources? I'm just trying to understand. So when you got these deals going on, this is not in the benefit of the residents. It's to calculate, like he said, in that meeting on YouTube, you're just looking for a revenue stream. When you're just looking for a revenue stream, you're just waiting to make sure that you get it. I do have a question as far as that LLC. Why is it in Delaware, but New Jersey is perfectly capable of starting an LLC? Do you want to answer that? Do you want to answer that, Deborah? No? I'm just asking a question. Do you want to answer that?
Most Delaware is a state that most LLCs are grounded in. You will find 90%...
Can you speak into the mic so I can hear your lovely voice?
Most of the LLCs are all originating from the state of Delaware. 90% of any LLC, a big LLC, not a small company, not a mom and pop LLC, is originated out of the state of Delaware. That's what they're known for, is their LLCs. Like, it probably has something to do with the property taxes or something. So that's why they all come out, I don't think. I think they're looking at something that's not there for that coming out of Delaware.
Um, yeah, the names are not there.
Oh, I know that, but that's not, I believe that the state of Delaware does not mandate that they have to become public.
Well, we're not in New Jersey, and that's where...
Because, okay, you can argue that, but you go to any big company, and most of their LLCs are coming out of Delaware.
Okay, my last, uh, what's it called? My if, no, blogger, Benjamin Robb, in March of 2015, called the shop "a hodgepodge mixed of substandard companies clobbered together by ambitious management." That's what they were talking about when they talked about Bernhard Capital.
Anyone else remember that?
Yes, sir. Thank you, uh, thank you for your hard work, too. It's not easy. Hi, my name is Jose Gabriel, I'm from Pleasantville, resident, and I'm a lawyer. I've lived in Pleasantville for almost 15 years, I'm a contractor here. I am against this contract. Uh, you may not do this kind of law weekly base, but I've read it. And a shell corporation wants to establish sometimes a contract for another corporation. A shell corporation is set up so that if there's any liability or negligence, the shell corporation takes the blame. The people who have the money behind that can scavenge the rig. And, uh, this particular, and I think it's the one quote that I'm wrong, it's called Pleasantville Environmental Partners. It was established, it's on a website, five months ago, out of nowhere. And it's hard to find who the directors are. Uh, and I think that's really curious. I truly, you start asking yourself, "Why is this being so quickly set up just five months ago?" Remember 2021?
Especially if the deal's not done.
Usually, from the internet, and all you can look at is a local public contract with a recognition preference map. It's 131 pages, and it details the work that hasn't been done by all these people here as to how it hasn't been done properly. I didn't have time to go over all of it. But looking at it, I can tell you this much, there are some questions, and perhaps it can be answered. And one of the questions is this, under section 48, column 11-50, duration of certain contracts, paragraph 3, well, up at the top. All contracts for service says that are, should be awarded for a period of 24 consecutive months for professional services such as ferry, the CFO, in Pleasantville. They can be renewed, that's not. But you read that carefully. Contracts may be awarded for longer periods of time, okay? That's the one I was talking about under section 3. The collection in this municipal solid waste, uh, sewage sludge. Now, here's the key part, that I think is being violated in this contract, for any term not exceeding the aggregate of five years. If I recall correctly, this contract is for over five years. So it's not in compliance with 48, column 11-50. It's a violation of it. It has to be renewed, has to be redone. It's right there, it's online, page 31, under that particular website.
Thank you, thank you for your time.
Just a couple more seconds. And I just want to encourage you all to read this and vote against it. The contract is passed, it's a violation of the law.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Just some general observations on tonight, early in my own Pleasantville, New Jersey. As all of these residents were speaking, look, I took pages and pages of notes. I saw two councilmen pick up their pens and take notes from the public. That is absolutely disgusting. And someone who just can't rush to pick up the pen to let people know that their time is up. Absolutely shame. Absolutely shame. So I want to talk three different things about transparency issues from this municipal government. We can hide behind newspapers, we can hide behind voting on resolutions. But let's lay that one on the line right here, because I know some of you are heading into primary elections. I know some of you are heading into general elections. And let's put the record really straight. So for every council person right here, I want your answer to that. Are you in favor of this concession agreement with Bernard, the workers, and Pleasantville Environmental Partners LLC for the concession of the wastewater management system in Pleasantville, New Jersey? It's a simple yes or no answer. Who goes first? Fabular, not to mock, no? Okay, who's next? Why are we hiding behind resolutions? Council president, yes or no? Are you in favor of, you in favor of this concession, yes or no? You're in fourth grade, councilman Carmelo, are you in favor of this concession or not? I can't hear you. You're not in favor. Councilman?
Questions?
Yes, sir.
Are you in favor of, yes or no? Don't mind, don't mind. It's a simple yes or no answer. The time is quick, the time is quick.
Yes or no?
It's a yes or no answer.
I'm just, we're bored. Yeah, we, we tell you. I have, I have a minute, it's time. Oh, you time to stop. Let me, let me answer your question and then the time, the time starts. Please. Listen, for our time, please don't drop it. Push it further out for, for nine, okay? Been in this position for four. I've been in this position for four months. Please, please. Now, yes or no? This is something that I've been, I've been in this position.
You're making, it's very simple.
I'm willing to ask you how to take this. I have been in this position for four months now. And I've learned the government moves really slow. And it's a time, it's a torture, and it's frustrating. I mean, and I understand the frustrations too. I, I hate when we have more questions than if we all here work together and find solutions to the problem. Since, and I can tell you, since the 23rd of May, I dug a little bit deeper into this one table.
Can you finish?
I urge my colleagues to pause, think, advise on what should go forward. And to further look into it, okay? And discuss those problems that we have in this particular, uh, issue. And if deemed necessary, we should go back to the negotiation table. Yeah, my, my, my answer is right there. Nothing is as simple as a yes or no. We must go back and see, and see exactly where we're at. Because there's a lot at stake. Our city is at stake. So, I guess a no answer for me would be completely unfair. I ask you, and I'm urging my colleagues to go back and to further discuss and further look into the particular.
But you're saying, no, you're correct, the case is it.
I was thinking, no, that's the counter as soon as you can say that, yes.
So, that's enough.
That's the counter as soon as, and due to the different particular that we still got to, uh, what on?
So, council, my final, my final question to you is, what exactly have you done to stop your fellow councilpeople from pushing this? What exactly have you done? Give me one example.
I'm just trying to get this minute, urge my.
A minute ago?
We were meeting last month and I asked before, so don't interrupt me, please, if you want me to answer your questions.
What have you done? Besides.
Just like I did a minute ago, I'm urging my colleagues to look deep, deeper into the conclusions thus far. I just stated that.
Thank you. With one last councilperson, are you in favor of the concession or not? Thank you.
Anyone else with a problem?
Three noes and two yeses.
Anyone else with a problem?
Absolutely. Seven quarters yes.
What else?
I would like to say that I have not got the answers based on that as it is. I'm urging council to suspend it, stop it, start again. Get a new contract, get some professional folks in that can help you all, uh, not enjoy the contract, but look at our infrastructure and come up with a better deal.
Thank you.
Anyone else with a problem?
Good evening, my name is, uh, I'm a Cali, Pleasantville resident. Uh, there was a question brought up about burn rock that was supposed to get answered back in the coming, as far as the toll of the mountain. If that's still forthcoming, if you have it. Also, uh, this is my first meeting, um, it's, you know, you're making up pretty mature decisions. There's all the information that's out there on it, um, that council may hear out that, which we get out, um, other than we said, uh. So, when you said that, you were, uh, not totally dissuaded because I've been a lot of questions that came out to me. There was a lot of questions that I weren't answering. And to vote on something without, I mean, this is incomplete. I don't understand it, uh. You know, it's confusing, you know, uh, I think it should be found and searched out further. Just even basically, if you go against open residency, the taxpayers, if you just arbitraried, open say, yeah. You, it's not humane. Obviously, I'm free people here. That, that's not the one that can affect that, you know? These need to have gone to start. So, uh, you know, I, I would like, I would like that to go forward. I don't know if it's passing, regardless of what we say there or nothing. You guys could be out of office in a couple of years, move out of state, people that are here, just, 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 just. So, it's, it's in the best interest of the public, the residents. I would think that you guys would just make sure that, you know, you got all eyes on us, on TV. I think, I've said, I picked the most arrogant side, I was entitled to have. It's stuff, you know, because of positions, you just came in a couple of months and you're on opposite the apple. I said, you know, you, you strap the fence there. But I appreciate you standing up and saying that there's some, uh, some questions that need to be answered. Uh, one more thing, I mean, kind of, Judy King, I know her. You know, so three, um, a mother made a projection that she would be a mayor of the state of Mississippi. My name is Mayor of Pleasantville. Revelations. I know also that you rely on your constituency to give you the best information so that you can lead the city. I hope that you, you'll demand that service from, you know, the passing of it, because it's the most, it's the downer.
Anyone else with a problem? Anyone else with a problem, say anyone, and take a portion of those public portion. On the favor, exactly? On the favor, how is that?
Yes, it's a yes or no, we're in a yes.
We are war.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, thank you for coming down. We do hear your concerns. We, uh, this has been a drawn and asked by, and we know for 12 years now, but it has been through some time. And we can't get our shoes on, we turn back so many things. But in meeting here, we had to just, uh, beg for the grand scale extension in advance. And the last one that we had to ask for, some months back, we got a little bit tested. We might test because they say, you keep asking, you keep asking, you're not getting the job. But we began to, we get the infrastructure done. Uh, in the meantime, when we put out the RFP, um, the request for the bulk to see who we can do, you know, what alternative we could add. And then our cap, because it's, you know, it's to us, we only have to, just a little history on that. And after talking, then it sounded kind of good. I would, I would always think if there's a nine year, it doesn't sound, you know, different things, you know, so they could be sitting off. But then the contract started changing and the discussions started changing. And, um, my mind started to move. And I just think that we, I, I just think that we, uh, should just continue seeking ways we can, I should walk from here and. But, um, the, uh, in the meantime, oh, in the meantime, our, our CFO, our business assistant, creator, and, uh, engineer, bond counsel, everyone started looking for other alternatives. That's what we think, you know, we're going to do bonds. In the meantime, as the talks and everything are going along, we could just go ahead and start doing what we have to do. The streets need to be done, you know? Or it's already been so, so long. So, I want you, I'm saying this all because I don't think that we're doing nothing. I don't want you to think that we're just doing, doing $4 million all of a sudden, acting this all of a sudden out of that. We really thought that we had a deal that we were, even though there were only one of that, um, excuse me, a bond. But, um, I can't speak for anyone else. And of course, as mayor, I wouldn't get to vote on it, but, uh, to me, it just doesn't look like what it did. I, I've had, I've had to change my opinion with the council to, you know, like, they are going to, they, they have their opinions, you know? Everyone has, you know, we don't know, I'm taxpayer. Yes, I, I have been in the process for eight plus years. So, anything that affects you all is going to, me, and even beyond that, I wouldn't do anything. Uh, voted in the office, I wouldn't do anything that would jeopardize my moral and character or something that I thought I would be moving out of town for a week anyway. So, I just want you all to know that we're, we're, um, everyone knows, not a lot of us up here does not act in an argument to deal whether they're for it or against it. Everyone has their opinions strongly. And yes, maybe mom is looking, I don't know, because I always have to, everything I do, I have to do everything in my, 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 my. And the, uh, other thing is transparency. Someone is looking to transparency in part, uh, but when I was campaigning, what I had said I wanted to do was have board meetings. I want to have a board meeting in the first, a board meeting in second. And I'm hoping that we'll do it in July, maybe, maybe it's July that I'll be able to do that and have the council board meetings. That way, if anything like this is going on, because you're saying that we're not getting the board. This will be your work, our way of getting the word out to each board. If you don't come, and that's what I get. But we will advertise it the best that we can. And there's a way of, uh, someone has, Chris, Chris Byrne, yes, Julia has about, um, getting that thing back. And we can do, we told that we can do that now on our website. We, we have a treaty plan. So, that's going to be very helpful. So, uh, we're open for any suggestions that you may have that can just make us better, you know, as far as communication. But, but once we start the board meetings, I think that's going to be very helpful. I hope, most of you, let's hear now, I talked to Mr. Allen, and she said that she was going to work with you and, uh, a few others. So, I, um, I'll be looking forward to you just really coming and, uh, being a part of that, that constitutes your community. Thank you. Oh, but before that, I just want to say that I attended the National Office of Science, you guys, we could pleasant go on. We had 44 students, Dr. Del Chatel, who gets to be, he did a good job. And, um, we had 44 students that did it, uh, they had to do it personally, they have to do it. This year, they were able to do it in person, then in a really, really nice ceremony. And then Saturday, they had the military ball, the RNTC. And that was a nice, nice event. They do a lot of events that's in the city, the RNTC. Thank you, have a good evening.
Counselor?
Yes, we'd have to do that too. The question was on social media.
Counselor?
Mayor, please ease our mind by just ending this concession deal. We would love to go forward with it, but we all have to get past this concession deal. This is a community killer. He's talking to the mayor.
Oh, so I understand the frustration, I understand the frustration.
Can you speak into the microphone, please?
I'm saying that I understand the frustration. We all, it's like every day, we read more and learn about this, uh, particularly. But all I ask of all of you is keep, keep helping us, keep coming in, keep setting those. I read Mr. Jones' emails all the time, I work with them. And I understand, and I hear the community, and I want to reflect what the community feels into my decision. I want to contribute. But I also have learned in the last couple of months that I've been here, there's a sense of resistance to change. And in order for us to fix the street, the infrastructure, so on and so forth, something got to get. Okay? Whether we do it with my daughter, we don't do it with, with anybody. I'm actually, more than likely, we would love for us to work ourselves.
Yeah, that's right.
I just want to ask, do you want to give up? But where we at now, you guys got to give us a chance to ride the water, to do whatever we can to improve our city. But we also have to be mindful, and in order to do that, something got to get. The sewer may have to blow up. And we talk about it like, we don't want to, taxes may have to blow up. We have to understand that. Again, I just wanted to let you all know, listen, I'm here to do the right thing, to play the right way, to have my community required, okay? But we have to learn from each other. You can't just be coming in here in batches and stuff like that. We all here together, this is affect all of us equally. Nobody loves our city more than the other. Again, we have to be mindful that something's got to get. At a certain point, we're going to have to raise the bar, our city, to make it better. All right, guys? Thank you very much.
Counselor, come over. Counselor, come over.
Yes.
This is, this is counsel's portion. You can speak to him after the counsel. Counselor, come over.
I'm calling you very well. I have been honest. I have worked for, for, before, and I have changed my mind recently. Recently, I've, uh, I've asked me, uh, brother said that, uh, all they were going to do was put a snake out there at the campus and put a code in our sewer system. And I'm not happy with that. I told him it would change everything, but when he said that thing, it just threw it behind him. So, that's why I'm not going for it. People would say it's going to change the whole sewer system or the new policy. But if you figure me as a plumber, a handyman, if you put code into our system, what will happen when in fact, still have to go back to maybe? So, uh, that's why I choose my mind, uh, I have to be honest.
There's one very important thing that hasn't been mentioned. And our sewer system, as is now, does produce a revenue stream for the city. Once we sign that contract, that revenue stream is down the sewer. Without that, $2 million approximately, we cannot, and I'm going to say something that nobody wants to hear. You're going to be looking at layoffs. If the city does not have that $2 million to pay for things, there will be layoffs in the sewer. We can afford that because we reduce the amount of fire, we reduce the amount of police, and we reduce an already strained public works department. So, when we seal this for our cabinet deal, what they do, we've lost that $2 million. And the only thing we get is $100,000.
We know, we're playing off.
So, we need to keep the money here in Pleasantville.
Yes.
And in one meeting, this young lady over here said, if we're going to raise the sewer taxes, at least going to convince the city of Pleasantville. With Pleasantville just putting a 2% tax on it. The residents of Pleasantville, for the 39 years, for 36 years, it finally doubled. We go from $500 to approximately $1,000 in 36 years with just 2%. With Bernard, from $500 to over $1,000 in 15 years. Take it once. And as far as leaving the city and the, when I. And as far as even the city, when I thought my obituary is going to say, Joanne Fabi Larra of Pleasantville.
Me too.
Happy ending to all my Muslim families out there, happy Mother's Day to my, the mothers out here. I want to say congratulations to all of our students who ran in the pen reneads, this weekend, and to all of our families. I'm going to say to you all, keep coming out, keep voicing your opinion, I am taking notes, and I'll see you at the next meeting.
Good evening, I just want to say again to those who need that, I spoke, you need additional information, just remember to support that information that I'm making, maybe get that information in time and fashion. Also, Mayor, just remind you that those of you who are interested in participating in any of the board meetings, please contact our office at the 48th floor, this is to have united.
Our sewer system, at the beginning, we're not endeavoring to just keep driving this thing on the way on. We're not endeavoring to just keep driving. As you know, for those systems that need to be fixed around this country, they've had turmoil, crash, everything's happened, and it intrudes into the water, so we have to do something. You're the public, you came to us for many, many years about our streets and our roads. And if you take a look to the left and to the right, you'll get lots of streets and roads back. It's improved. If you look, even at our waterfront, look at the waterfront, our kids moved out of the area, and then high school, moved to another high school, a long, long time ago. You should be pissed off about that. Say, how come we can't get any more? We can't get moving because we don't have infrastructure. All of these cities, when they started this, the city, it's infrastructure. The infrastructure is in front of everybody's mouth, from Africa to Atlanta, to New Jersey, to here in Pleasantville. It has to be fixed. It slows down the projects, it slows down the business, it slows down the growth, it slows down the revenue, it slows down the tax stream, it slows down everything. We have dated pump stations, sewer lines.
It's not what you do, it's how you do it.
Thank you, Tim, for yelling out again, thank you. I listen to you, and you won't listen. We sent back grants, we sent back state aid, we sent back money, we sent it back money for years. This ain't, it's not, it's not nothing new, for years, because they don't even surface, but we're responsible for the infrastructure, we're responsible for the sewer lines. It have to get done.
Not like this.
To me, to me, in my, in my community, my thought process of it is, I'm not happy with just going out to my waterfront, my community that I live in, once a year. I think it's something that we should be able to have been in the buildup, along with our sewer, and along with our residents, to, along with our streets, to make things better. We have to come up with our game. So our council prior to this, our prior, our little prior committees, mayor, and also council president at that particular time, CFO, who came up with a $10 million sale, a $10 million sale, $12 million sale, was to New Jersey's American Water, who gave our city away, actually, it's our A-Grave City right now, that's the, in 97% increases, the increase is double. We worked on this diligently. We had meetings for two and a half years, we had scrutiny for this, and it come down to, it comes down to a point where, do we need to do something? We have to do something, because if you don't do anything, then you risk having, going to a heart where you have damaged systems, leaking into our waters and things that next. So you have to do something. We don't, because there's, there wasn't, there wasn't...
This is not fair. This is not fair.
We found a deal that's ten times better than the deal that we worked on before.
This is not fair.
I like to thank you, I like to thank you, I like to thank you for coming out, I like to thank you for challenging us, but we challenge ourselves.
No, no, man.
That's fair. We challenge ourselves. I stand by it, we challenge ourselves. Thank you for coming out, God bless you, God bless your city, and God bless you.
Somebody is forgetting some money from Burnham.
I'm going to tell you what you're doing.
Somebody...
All in favor, eyes out.
Ask her.
How much y'all get?
You know who's going to be responsible?